Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the, this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is Monday, November 6, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Going to make a couple announcements before we call the meeting to order. First, the Village of Oregon Park Planning Vision Workshop for Park and Open Space Plan. There's a meeting December 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Oregon Village Hall. And also, the village is looking for permanent and alternate members on the Historic Preservation Commission. Interested village residents and non-residents should submit a village application to the village administrator. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Here. Grenier?
Here.
Brethauer? Boudreau? Statens?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Bollie?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public appearance, and that is from the Plant Commission, so I'll turn it over to Trustee Carpenter. Gini?
Do, um, is there anyone here to address us in the audience, or do we not care?
Jeff is here.
Oh, Jeff is here.
I'm just here to get anybody to cover the eyes for him.
Okay, that's all right.
So I'm just here to listen to him.
Hey, all right, so here we go. I have a lot of stuff to read, brace yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, this is the Agenda Item and Planning Commission's, uh, motion. Approval of the amended general development plan and specific implementation plan submitted by Ben Cowan, manager of Oregon Ice Arena, Inc., for exterior recreational improvements and uses including outdoor volleyball courts, a sports diamond, fencing, and other outdoor equipment. Improvements to be made to the property at 100 North Perry Parkway, Village of Oregon, Dane County. The Planning Commission moved, Meyer moved, and Bano seconded to recommend to the village board the approval of the GDP and the SIP, including the site plan submitted by Ben Cowan, manager, Oregon Ice Arena, Inc., conditioned upon the following. Making the revisions to the GDP and SIP requested from the village attorney and email sent to the applicant on September 14th, meeting the village planner's recommendations from his memos dated September 7th and September 8th, and complying with the zoning violations from Public Work Director Jeff Rau's memo dated July 6th, excluding the immediate removal of the metal recycling dumpster. And the limousines must be removed by November 1st. The motion carried seven zero. So item, uh, item two, these are village administrators' notes. The village administrator is recommending to the board that we waive $2,000 of the $5,369.93 fee, leaving a balance of $3,369.93 owed to the village by the ice arena, and that the zoning ordinance not be effective until the balance is paid in full. And on our desks, we have a statement of the fees. And then, item B, per resolution number 1722, with the zoning ordinance approval, the ice arena could sell alcohol in the outdoor area as depicted in Exhibit B, which was part of their liquor license application approved, promised description. All right, are you ready to move, let me just do number three?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so this is adopting the ordinance. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 1715. This is an ordinance changing the zoning classification of the property located at 110 North Perry Parkway. So we have, this is our first motion to consider, and I'll make it. The board, by two-thirds vote of the board members tonight, may suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Are, are we just, the motion, as we have in our package, is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, we're just voting this part to suspend the rules so we can vote on the resolution tonight rather than have to wait another meeting.
Okay, I don't have any discussion on this, then?
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is second to suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries?
Okay, then I'll make this, um, the second motion so we can open up discussion. I will make the motion that we, um, do we, do I approve or consider?
Motion to adopt ordinance number...
Motion to adopt, okay. I will make the motion to adopt ordinance number 1715, which is changing the zoning classification of property located at 110 North Perry Parkway. I'll second that.
Thank you.
And may I just mention something, Gini?
Yes.
In the ordinance, on page two of the ordinance, so that the, uh, if you look up, the, on the top there, it says that, um, the, the $3,289 number is not, is not the same that's on this sheet. So that, that number actually, the number we should be using is the, is the, the balance that's on the agenda, the $3,369.93.
Okay.
Just that Candy and I were having to do this so in a hurry on, and I think we got the right number now.
Okay.
So is reducing that fee a part of this motion, Mike?
It's in the ordinance, correct.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my question's going to be for staff. And I, thanks for the nice breakdown of all that, but it looks like all of this is out of pocket for the village. These are fees from consulting...
The majority of his consulting time. There is also the, what we call the 10% administrative fee on top of that, but, but the bulk of it is, um, is consulting fees from Matt's firm and Mike Slavney's firm, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
So those bills have no doubt been paid, then? If not, they would have been paid soon?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do we do this for anybody else? Do we have out-of-pocket costs that we just wait?
Um, I will do that. The, the board's given me latitude in the years to, uh, past years to, like, when a development starts and they go to a conceptual planning commission meeting, I will cover that sometimes. And then, but once, once the project is moving ahead and is coming back to planning or something, then they, they have to sign the, uh, pre- preliminary development agreement, and then they start paying that. So I do, I do cover some upfront minor costs, yep.
Well, this is more than minor.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's $2,000. Did, um, did any of this result as from, um, inaction or incorrect action by the, uh, by the developer? I'm going to call it developer. Or the principal?
Well, I, I think, I think, as Jeff Rau talked about at the last meeting, you know, there was a lot of back and forth. We were getting some of the items piecemeal. It was, it was hard to keep track of what was going on. I will say that, um, I don't, I don't agree with everything Ben said about that once Matt got involved, that he completely redid the GDP and SIP, but, but Matt did spend some time redoing that. And, um, and should he, should Ben pay for that? And I kind of went back and forth, and, um, I, I think some of the work that maybe happened at the end there, I don't know, it, like I said, it was a little bit of a confusion process. It was confusing during the summer. Went back and forth to planning, I think, three times.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, I guess what I'm trying to search for is why did it have to go back and forth?
Because, um, the plant, as you remember, the last time I had those items on, on the agenda from planning, they felt it was lacking in detail.
Yeah, the planning, Planning Commission asked the applicant to revise their submission. They did not, we did not feel that we had enough information to make a decision, so that happened a couple of times.
Okay.
We, so Jerry, staff typically does not take a GDP and SIP and put it on the Plan Commission agenda unless we think it's complete. But, and I, I think Jeff will agree with me on this. We had gotten to the point where we needed the commission to weigh in on the situation, so, um, and they did. And they, they, they told petitioner Ben to go back and revise the GDP and SIP. And then he did, he came back again, and we had to unfortunately reschedule the hearing because it needed to be rescheduled. So it was a, it was a long process. Yeah, numerous meetings, numerous meetings, numerous emails.
Okay, so I'm, I see you're recommending this, so I assume then, at this time, you still feel this is a valid, um, waiving of fees?
Correct, yes, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say on the waiving of fees, I've, I talked to Mike about this earlier. I think it's just, it's a gesture of goodwill to the ice arena. They're, I believe, clearly struggling financially, and every dollar helps, and, uh, I would think this would be a boost to them to, to waive these fees, so. They appreciate that, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Other discussion?
Um, so clarifying, uh, in item two B, it says that, um, the ice arena can sell alcohol in the outdoor areas depicted in Exhibit B, because that was part of their liquor license application?
So when, when Candy was here, she, she, when that was brought up at the last meeting, she, she had a check on that, because it was, it was discussed whether or not something had happened specially for their liquor license. When Matt drafted this resolution, 1722, we said they could serve alcohol outside contingent on the zoning ordinance being adopted. But did they still have to get the security plan approved by...
I'd say the security plan is...
By, by the chief, and then the large special events still have to come back through planning and the board. Yep.
And Jeff, can you just remind me, is, is the outdoor area, is that going to be totally fenced? Can people, like, walk?
Totally fenced.
Okay, so they can't, like, walk to the street or anything with a beer? Okay.
I believe it was a six-foot-high black chain fence.
Okay, yep, I remember now.
And the security plan will have to go through the chief.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion? We have talked about this a lot in the past.
It's a leap of faith on our part, to a degree.
Can you move your mic down a little, Doug?
Oh, sorry.
Just pull it down. There you go.
These precautions we're taking are important, because it's something of a leap of faith to mix alcohol in a venue where there's possibility of kids being around. So we have to hope that we'll be strictly monitoring the progress during the next, what, six months or so?
Well, it'd be going forward if we renew the license every year.
I, I'd have to totally disagree with that. I mean, we've had this rink for 10 years, we've had a license for 10 years, and we've never had one complaint that I've known of. So it's not a leap of faith, it's standard operating procedure, that we try to do the best we can, or they try to do the best they can to make sure that they, just like any other establishment in town, that they, you know, keep the alcohol away from the kids. I mean, that's what everybody tries to do. I mean, the fact that, the stuff that this will be used for is mostly adult volleyball, stuff like that. And, so I don't think it's a leap of faith, but I think it's, you know, we all try to do the best we can.
I see your point, I see your point.
Yeah.
And, and in the, in the resolution that's in the packet, Doug, that Matt drafted, I mean, we actually have some conditions in there about, when, particularly when youth hockey games are being played, that how, how alcohol has to be dealt with at that point. So.
Jeff, do you, do you think on, in this outdoor area, will there be kids' games? Like kids' kickball, youth volleyball?
Yeah, but they probably won't be, they won't be serving alcohol when the kids, I mean, they, this, for the summer daycare, you know, well, they have a summer program where they, the kids come in, and they, you know, Monday through Friday for when their school's off, and then they have the outdoor area and all that stuff. Though alcohol is mainly for adult volleyball at night, or maybe a kick volleyball, adult league, something like that. But they're restricted to, you know, noon on weekends, and I can't remember what it is during the week. Six o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember either, Jeff.
Yeah.
So as I say, if you look under section F, keep going back to this resolution, sorry.
That's good.
It says, "No person under the age of 21 shall be allowed in the outdoor area while alcohol is being served in the outdoor area." So I mean, unless...
Well, unless accompanied by parent or guardian.
Right, right. And so, so, so a bunch of parents drop their kids off to play something during the day, you cannot have alcohol out there. Yeah. If they do, it'd be a violation of liquor license.
Right, it would be just like, you know, going to Mulligan's or whatever and having the kids alongside you.
Right.
Or...
Jeff, do you know, I talked about a while ago about, uh, putting security zones out there. Do you know if that's in the works at all?
It is in the works, it's just, it's got to get paid for. They're trying to work with a couple of my big clients to get some cameras donated.
Okay. That's probably going to be a requirement of my plan, so, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming this isn't going to be implemented until spring now, because we probably won't be doing a lot of volleyball in the next couple of months.
Probably not.
I don't know, snow volleyball might be fun.
Could be.
Jerry?
Chief, do you, do you have any reservations whatsoever about doing this? Uh, what, okay, what are your reservations? How about that?
Well, it's just like, it's just like opening up another bar. So, you know, it's just more work for us eventually, um, you know, and when I talk to Ben, it's always when you have these type of establishments and then you have competition and alcohol, things can get out of hand, and that's why I wanted cameras out there, so we could be, you know, do the best we could to monitor those types of things, so. I don't think it's my place to decide whether or not we have another bar in town or not, but is it going to create more work for us? I think so, eventually, I don't know how much, but I think it's safe to say, well.
That's why I wanted you to weigh in. I, uh, and under our alcohol program in town here, how many violations or how many, um, does it take before the license is in jeopardy?
Well, uh, depends on the nature of the violation, but just to briefly recap, count some recent history. We've had, uh, some compliance checks where there have been, including situations where, where there have been two in a 12-month period, which is kind of a cutoff point, I mean, then where you actually do have the authority to take some action. And I think the village board has come to recognize that you're in a very difficult spot at that point, because if you two choose to, um, seek to suspend the license, you have to suspend it for a minimum period of time that's fairly, that's longer than what you were thinking, you know? Under the statute, you can't just suspend it for, for a day, or, can't remember what it is offhand. You remember that, what that was, but it was... And, and so the board decided has, when, so you have the option to suspend the license after two violations, if we're talking, if the violation is serving an underage person.
Yeah.
But so far, the board has chosen to not, to not take that action, because it's, it's really puts the business in a very difficult position. So I'll tell you what my, I'll, I'll tell you what my experience has been with this. Communities typically don't take that kind of enforcement action against a licensed establishment unless it's a real problem. And the statute that is typically used to suspend, or in this case, generally revoke a license, is one that, uh, where, where someone runs, and this is the language of the statute, a riotous, disorderly, or otherwise whatever establishment, I can't remember exactly. These are the kinds of places where there are tons of police calls, fights, weapons. That's the only, in my experience, as a lawyer for 20 years now.
City medicine has done that, yeah.
I've never seen a community shut anybody down unless that's what's going on now. So if, again, if there were two or more violations in a 12-month period at this or another establishment, you could theoretically choose to suspend the license. I think the minimum period of suspension is 30 days or something like that. When you've had that opportunity in the past, you've kind of backed off from it. So that's, that's my, based on my experience, what I've seen.
Okay, thank you. When it comes to giving a new license, this is like a, isn't this like a new license now?
No, we've already granted the license, which, but with respect to the outdoor area, what the board said was, this license doesn't apply in the outdoor area unless the zoning is also approved. So it's really the zoning decision now that's going to dictate whether alcohol is allowed outside.
Okay, so, when other license holders in the village have wanted to do something similar to this, did they have to pay, uh, a big fee upfront, or is that just when they get the license?
You mean like the $10,000 reserve, Class B?
Right.
It depends on what kind of license. This is not that kind of license.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and in the past, Jerry, we, if we, if we didn't have one available, then they paid us to fee. We did an economic development grant back to at least two parties, maybe three, but now we can't do it anymore. The state prohibits that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that it's clear to the board and also to Jeff that I'm recommending that the, uh, the ordinance is not effective until the, if you agree with the balance, that the balance is paid off before the, okay?
No, I think the last time we talked about this, I, I expressed that sentiment.
Okay, I make sure you knew, okay.
Yeah.
So Jeff, a common thing, um, at bars, they have the volleyball. You know, the teams that buy the most pitchers win more pitchers. Is that going to happen at the arena?
I believe your restrictions before said that there couldn't be any drink specials.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, too, that I want to be sure that there was no thought that you could do that, because it says any gamer contest, which involves awarding any alcohol beverage as a prize, so.
That's right, it's under, it's under G.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just, I just read that, I want to be sure that we're on the same channel on that, uh, going forward.
Something very good.
And, you know, Trustee Brethauer mentioned he thought it's a leap of faith, and you said you didn't think, I think it's kind of someplace in between. The, the implementation of the license has been done well, as far as we know, and commend people on that. I think Sean especially has done a nice job with that. Uh, I think there's some leap of faith going forward if this happens, because it's a whole different environment to go outside with the numbers of people that would be there. To me, it's a lot different than a Whalers game, uh, given that setting and so on. So I think that's kind of someplace in between. I'm not sure what that means, but that's how I would see that. My concern is, is, like Jerry said, it's, uh, it's like, or like Chief, Chief said, it's, uh, pretty much opening another bar, and I don't know if we need another bar in town.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I've, I've been to a lot of ice rinks in my life, and I'm going to another one this weekend, and outside of this area, there isn't one that doesn't have a food and a bar in it.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, nowadays, it's, you know, the parents are waiting for their kids, or they're doing whatever. They go to have something to eat, they have a beer, whatever. And, um, you know, most of the ice rinks that we go to, like the one I'm going to this weekend, is in Illinois. It's in a mall, actually, and, you know, they serve alcohol, food, whatever, and, you know, it's, it's harder and harder to get people to come to places, and, you know, whatever you can give them to, to make it easier. I don't think it is a bar is a place where you go, and if you want a beer, you can have one. You're not going to, no one goes to the ice arena to have a beer. You know, they're there, and, well, I'm, I'm having dinner, let's have a beer, whatever. It's not like you're going to the tap or something like that, where you're just going there to sit at a bar and watch TV and drink beer. And it's just, just an amenity that they can have when they're there. Just like the food, and, you know, two years ago, we had a small concession stand at the rink. We did $10,000 worth of food. Now they do $40,000 worth of food, because they have a full menu, and it's open seven days a week, and there's, you know, the beer sales will not be even close to what the food sales are, so.
Okay. Well, isn't that the purpose of having volleyball and the baseball? Isn't to, to bring in leagues to do that stuff?
Right, to, to bring those people in, to get them lea, and then it's easier to get them in if they can have a beer. I mean, it's all, it's all trying to get people to use it 24/7, because, you know, in the summertime, we have, they have a lot of camps and all that, but there's, it mainly goes unused. And if they can bring in some summer, you know, entertainment, stuff like that, then they can sell more memberships. They have, uh, the gym opening up now, and so it's going to be a full-time exercise facility, and you'll be able to skate, work out, volleyball, everything.
I was going to bring this up, but you, you mentioned how it's common to have alcohol served at ice arenas. There's a great proliferation of licenses in Wisconsin. In Wisconsin, we have one license for every 400 people. Nationwide, it's averaged one for 1,500 people. That's led to a lot of problems in the state. Not having a license here is not going to change that. I don't mean to say that, but when I say, "I don't think we need another bar," that's kind of where some of that comes from, that, that, um, alcohol's so readily available, including for underage drinkers, not that it wouldn't be there, but it's created lots and lots of problems in the state. Other thoughts? You know, I have to say, I don't know how people are going to vote, but I think it might be wise to have all seven trustees here before we vote. I don't know what the rest of you think. I don't know if people want to get this done. Again, I don't know how people are going to vote, but, um, we're missing Trustee Boudreau, who would quite likely support this.
Will he be present later on in the meeting?
Around 6:15, Doug. That's what, he told me that last week.
Yeah.
I, I guess, I, it's up to, with the pleasure of the board. I mean, if you don't think it's going to pass, I guess we can wait for Jeff.
I don't know. I mean, I, I can't, I can't and I don't go out and talk to people, what do you think about this?
Right.
That's not appropriate to do that, and, and I don't do that. So I don't know how people are going to vote, but I, I just see that Trustee Boudreau can't be here until later, and, um, you may be losing vote, maybe it makes no difference, I don't know. But, um...
Well, I guess...
Waiting wouldn't hurt you.
Okay, so we'll postpone it for 50, 45 minutes?
Does that sound okay with people? Gini, what do you think?
It, it doesn't matter to me. I, I mean, if, if you're wondering how I'm, I would vote, I, I would vote for it, and here's why I would vote for it, because you're serving food, so, um, I think that's important when you're serving alcohol, that there's food present, so that gives me some comfort. The hours are pretty restricted, Monday through Friday, Saturdays and Sundays, it's most of the day, but we have something in there that it cannot be served when there's children present, when their parents aren't there. So I think we're doing everything that we can. I would have a question for the chief, like, what, the thing that this reminds me of is probably is outdoor volleyball courts at headquarters. Do you have, do you see problems out there? Do you get calls at all with people mixing alcohol and sports and fights or anything like that?
Well, you're asking me to think about my memory when I'm not there and going off of briefing logs. I don't necessarily think that we have a lot of calls out in those areas, per se. I know we have a lot of calls for drunk driving and over-serving and things like that at, at headquarters. Are those things hand in hand? I don't know, but I know we get calls there, so. When I said that our work's going to go up, it's going to go up whether we're either enforcing the law or we're enforcing the ordinance, um, out there as well. So that's all I was trying to say, is how our, our volume of work is going to go up. I would like to think that the people that go there aren't going to get into trouble, but you never know, so. One of the things I was talking to Jeff about, and I talked to Ben about, is, is the security of the whole establishment out there, and that's why I wanted to have the cameras out there, because inevitably, something's going to happen, somebody's going to get into a fight, and it just happens when you have alcohol involved. And then when you're playing sports, it just happens. So I want to be able to be a, to not only diffuse that situation, but I want to be able to solve that as well. And it's hard to do when I don't have cameras out there and figure out who it is, because nobody seems to know what happened. "I didn't see it," is always the excuse that we get, and we're not able to solve it. So that's one of the things why I think it's very important to have cameras out in that area. We're not treating this establishment any different than we do headquarters. Headquarters has cameras out there as well. So, um, I talked to Ben about that, he said he was going to do that. It was always, you know, it's a financial issue, situation with them, I get that, but it's probably going, like I said, it's going to be one of my requirements for the security plan, so.
That makes me feel a bit better, too. If, if, if you're not going to sign off on their security plan until they have cameras, that would also make me feel better. Puts another check in my box. So perhaps a fundraiser for security cameras is a near winter future.
And it has to be quality cameras, right?
Yeah, I got to be able to see what...
Yeah.
What I'm looking at as far as, uh, you know, identification purposes go, because a lot of the cameras that we have around, especially, it seems like some of the convenience stores, gas stations, they're just not good quality, so.
Yeah, that was my experience, too, when I was working there. So that's important, that you can actually see what is going on on the cameras, it's not just all fuzzy. Other thoughts? Go ahead.
Yes, you know, I got to say, I'm kind of conflicted. I, I guess maybe, the reason I'm conflicted is I've been around, I've been on this board 16 years, and I was here when this, I guess Jeff started this facility, and, um, always happy to support a youth activity, something to keep the youth busy, something that furthers their development. And, uh, over the years, it's kind of morphed, and we've, okay, now we need to, a few years ago, now we need to sell alcohol, now we need to sell food, and now we got to have outdoor sports. And I, you know, and that's, I guess I don't have a problem with that, but where, where is it all going to end? When will this be profitable, Jeff?
Well, I, you know, I've been around here for a long time, too.
I know you have.
And I started this 12 years ago, um, and from the get-go, it was always a community organization. It was not just a youth facility.
Right.
This was based for everybody. This was based for the kids to come, this was based for the adults to come. And nowadays, if the adults want to come, most of them, the places they go, they serve alcohol. And I, we're not, I mean, we're serving beer, but we're not a bar as in, you know, Class A liquor, okay? So you can have a beer when you're playing. I guess, you know, it's gone back to what we originally, because when we originally built the building, we were going to have the sports arena, the ice arena on one side, and a, and a facility on the other side for, for, for working out, and then the school came, and then we decided to switch that over. So basically, it's going back to what it was now. We had always planned on outside facilities for baseball, softball, whatever, and, uh, actually, that whole area's... And actually, that whole area is designated to be an indoor basketball arena eventually. So this is just a temporary thing until they can come up with enough money to add on, so we can put an indoor soccer, indoor basketball in.
But really, it's not temporary, because once you get this, you have it.
It's temporary until they build the new building, yes. It's, yes, it's not temporary, it's gonna be there until they build the new building, so...
Right, right.
But I guess, to me, it isn't any different than the day we came and started it in the first place. We had an alcohol, we had a liquor license from the get-go. And we haven't changed the operating procedures very much. It's...
No, I mean, you're doing everything you can, and I, I get that. But I've, this step will put you in direct competition with other for-profit facilities in town that came in, they paid the 10 grand for their, no?
Only certain people got charged $10,000.
Once they're only over their license. I mean, a lot of the people in town didn't pay that at all. Actually, is there anybody in town that actually paid it that didn't get it back?
I don't think so, Jeff.
No.
Yeah, okay.
So, so there's not one person in town that had to pay for a liquor license?
Then I stand corrected on that.
Well, they, they paid the dues.
Paid the dues and they got it back, yeah.
They paid the basic, basic fee.
Okay.
Right.
So I, I guess I, I'm just conflicted about the, the evolution of this facility. It, I liked it when it was a for-youth facility only, but I understand what you're saying, that you're gonna have the parents along, and it's a long, a long day. And, but the...
Yeah, and like I said, it was never just for the youth. I mean, we had the outlaw hockey, the adult leagues, we had all that stuff. I mean, we've, since the get-go, I mean, you, to run a nonprofit and to get people to donate is, you know, when you're trying to sell ice at 240 bucks an hour, and, you know, and your, your electric bills are $10,000 a month, because you have to do whatever you can. And if, if we have to morph into something so we can make more money, that's better than shutting the doors.
But you're gonna keep youth hockey?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, that's a, that's, you know, the, the figure skating, and, and that's why Ben couldn't be here tonight, because he couldn't find somebody to do the ice, and the speed skaters are there tonight, and, so, I mean, no, there's, it's getting actually bigger. You know, the youth, we're one of the growing youth leagues in youth, youth facilities for hockey. All the other towns around are, are actually dwindling in size, and they're losing teams. We're actually still growing.
Okay, that's good. And chief, I assume that they're gonna be subject to the compliance checks?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Anybody else? So Jeff, I'm like Jerry, too, I'm conflicted, believe it or not. I don't wanna see the place go dark, either. I think there are a lot of positive things there. I have concerns about another spot to be selling alcohol. And part of that comes from, you know, there were code violations that had to be fixed. Some that aren't mentioned here, there are fire code violations, and it seemed like the management wasn't really concerned about following the rules. So what's to make us think that's gonna change?
Um...
How, how is the manager overseen and supervised?
Well, I'll have to say that, that Ben's partner is now based out of the rink, and so he is spending a lot more time there now, so there's more, there's more management at the rink, other than just one person. Before, his partner was running another rink, and now he's moved in and he's running the, help running the Oregon rink. So, and with all the training facilities that were done at the other rinks, moving to the Oregon rinks, they're gonna be a lot more, there'll be a lot more hands-on there now than before they were doing training facilities in three different rinks. Now they're, they're moving it all to the Oregon rink, and that's why the new athletic club is, or the new workout room is getting, so all the goalie clinics and the high-end hockey clinics are coming to Oregon now, which, you know, only helps Oregon, of course, so, and there'll be more management here onsite.
Okay, so convince me that the managers will follow these guidelines. What's to make us think that's gonna happen?
If they don't, the fire department has the right to shut them down. I mean, that's what the ordinance is, and that's what the rules say. I mean, if, you know, if they don't do what they're told, then they, they have to shut the doors. I mean, you can pull an occupancy permit if, if they don't fix a door, or if they don't fix the wiring, or whatever.
Yeah, it's more than just fire code things, when I'm talking about things in the resolution. What's to make us think they'll conscientiously follow us all the time?
Yeah. I, I think the new management is under a learning, a learning curve that I think they're finally getting that, that, what needs to be done. I mean, I was, when I ran it, it was, we knew everybody, and we knew what had to be done, and now that, that they're took, took over, they're, they're learning more and more every day.
Okay, so is it safe for me to think that you will express to the management the concern that they have to follow these rules and do that in a serious manner, so they know that's what has to happen?
Yes.
Since they're not here?
Yes. I've ac, I've actually been spending more time down at the rink lately and talking to them and trying to help them out a little more, trying to, that my kids are almost out of college now, and I have some extra time, and...
Okay. Anyone else?
I just have to say, I, I believe Jeff has convinced me that this is worth a, a try. So I'm gonna support this.
Thanks.
I'm at the same place, Jeff. Okay? And you talked me to higher grade sociology, I think, too, so it's not the first time. Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion to second to adopt ordinance number 17-15.
Hey, Steve, for, do we need to change it to 1722? Because that's the one that's in the packet.
That's, that was, that's the resolution. We're talking about the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So we're okay with 1750?
Yeah, but actually, if we could just note that, that, the, the amount on page two is different, for the record.
The dollar amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-three, sixty-nine, ninety-three.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, this includes a reduction of $2,000.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so we have that motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All set?
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Why didn't you sneak in?
She just, she just...
Trustee stealth ninja.
You just never know.
We didn't even hear him.
No. Been here the whole time, Jerry.
We know better than that, Jeff.
Well, we did roll call.
Okay, so we're on to item four. Village attorney, village administrator report, discussion possible action on revised request for proposal, RFP for banking services. Recommend a motion as to authorize sending revised request for proposal for banking services. The board is requested to identify which board members should interview the selected banks.
If, if any, I should have probably added, if any, if you want, it's up to the board to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And the main, the main, if you may recall, the main reason this is coming back is when we did the original RFP, we had a requirement, right Lisa, for an audit. And the banks that were interested in, they do not do an audit, so Matt has a, a partner in your firm that is an expert in banking, and we came up with this...
Yeah, well, the requirements now...
Option, I guess, alternative.
There are some alternatives. There's still, there are still some rigorous standards that are gonna have to be satisfied under page two, conditions of qualifying relating to protection of deposits and financial information. So under the, under C, financial information, now the institutions would have, have to provide financial statements for the past, for the past two years, and either an unqualified auditor's opinion or a reviewed financial statement by a regionally recognized CPA So hopefully that will...
Which is, oh, sorry. Which is the reason, when you look at the schedule, which is on page six, we're giving, we're giving the banks time to respond. We think they're gonna have to go out and get that, so we're, we're trying to give them as much latitude and flexibility to, so they can obviously submit an RFP to us.
When's the last time you went through the RFP process for these services?
Two, 2006, right when Steve...
Been a while.
Became village president. I remember that.
I don't.
I don't either.
Who's our, who's our current bank?
JP Morgan.
JP Morgan.
And, and why we, I was telling this to Matt on the phone today, the, the last time, it was a little bit easier trying to decide where to go, because we wanted, when, when former finance director was here, Renee, she wanted to go and do online banking. And really, at that point, 10 years ago, JP was, that's, they could do that. Some other local banks couldn't do that. Now I think the local banks, everyone banks online now. So, and I will say, and all these agrees with this, that we're not leaving JP Morgan because of, that we're unhappy with them. They have provided great service to us. Their, their online banking is very secure. They're always doing something to, for protection of their customers, but I know there's a desire by the board and some people in town for us to try to bank locally, so we're, we're doing that, so...
Well, that, and I think it's a good idea to, to test the water every so often, to see, you know, if you can get a better price for the same service. And otherwise, everybody gets a little too comfortable.
It, yeah, except, I mean, for, for, when you're doing banking, we're looking at service. I mean, I mean, I'm not saying that fees aren't important, but, you know, we, we do not wanna go backwards on the services we're getting from the, from JP Morgan.
Have you added any new services you're asking for?
Um, I don't, I don't think so. No, no, no.
No.
Well, like I said, the strong thing they provided 10 years ago, 10 plus years ago, was online banking, Jerry.
Yes.
So, so we, so since we had to make this change, we asked Matt to work with his partner, and, and they decided, we decided to add some things and tighten up the RFP, so we're gonna, we're just gonna resend it, everybody.
Okay. If you're curious, there is a whole section here on scope of banking services that is, it's pretty extensive, more than I need in my personal life, I can do that.
Yeah, looked really thorough.
Yeah, can I ask Jeff a question? Since you're a banker, if, if you were a bank, I mean, you are a banker, but is the RFP situated in a way that you, that you think banks will want this business? Would they be interested in responding?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we're not being, we're not asking too much or being unreasonable in the RFP?
Not at all.
Okay. I, I have no idea, I'm not a banker, right? I just don't wanna sit out to go through those, work and have no one respond.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, actually, the reason we're here tonight is because the first go at this kind of got those sorts of responses from the local banks, which were the target audience, and...
Okay.
So Mike and, and team tweaked it. And now this, as it sits, is, is perfect.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we have the motion to second to authorize sending the revised request for proposal for banking services. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain.
Thanks, Jeff. And Mike has asked, is there anyone who would like to be involved in interviewing the selected banks?
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else?
How, tell me about that, how long do they take? How many banks?
Um, a lot, a lot depends on who's gonna respond, and the list of questions, and, so, you know, Jerry and I talked about this, you know, being chair of finance committee. We've done it where, where the staff just selected the banks. I think because we're probably gonna end up with a local bank, I think Lisa and I would like to have the village board, at least one village board member, if not two, involved in the selection process. And then, of course, that's gonna come forward to the board, and the board's gonna hire the bank, the bank, yeah.
So we'll interview every bank to submit the proposal?
No.
Or we'll, we'll, like, we hire the person we screen out, and just pick one, so...
Yeah. But we're gonna have to end up using probably, is it Rich? I gotta stick with Rich. Rich, some, some, the partner from Matt's firm to help us maybe go through them.
Okay.
My sense is that, you know, 95% of the information you need to evaluate competing proposals is gonna be in, in the written submission and response. Somebody's gonna have to kind of put that together, and then you'll have to narrow it down to however many finalists you wanna interview. I don't know if that's gonna be two, or three, or...
Three, yeah.
And then the, the interview process, my, again, my sense is, a lot of this is, is just information about the kind of services they can provide and the kind of systems they have. So the interviews, my, are probably not gonna be like the key determining factor here. I mean, that will be the last step in the process, you can meet the people you'll be dealing with. But I think the submission, the paper submissions are gonna be the, the most important part of the process.
Yeah, I would help with those, too.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So I know that Jeff abstained. So Jeff, if, like, let's say your bank gets elected to be the village's bank, are you worried that you might have to abstain on a lot of things?
Well, I was, I would probably punt to Matt on that, but my guess is I would abstain on any actions that the board would take regarding bank decisions.
Well, and we're gonna, Jeff, we should talk before your bank even submits a proposal, because there is a statute that, depending on your position within the bank, you may find that your bank shouldn't even submit a proposal. I'm not saying that's for sure the case, but we should talk about that before you do.
Yeah.
And then my sense is that, aside from that issue, assuming, assuming your bank is able to participate without creating a problem for you, and they're selected, aside from the, the decision to select that institution, I can't think of an issue that ever would come, that ever, I can't think of any issues that ever come before the board involving banking relationship issues.
Okay.
They just don't, other than we're selecting you.
All right, that's good.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it would suck if Jeff could never vote on anything. Because sometimes we actually need you to vote, Jeff.
But the upside is, I would have less to say during that time.
That's just a bunch of trees.
Maybe we can expand that a bit. Good thing, Jeff.
Less than half of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Good thing, Jeff, you might have to retire.
Yes.
Okay, so we ready to move on from banking services? You got everything?
Yes. Thank you.
So item B is from October 5th, planning commission, so Jeannie, back to you, please.
Yes, okay. So this is regarding the Leeward addition to the Bergamot final plant, plat, phase 4E, and this is from the planning commission, being a move seconded by MAR, to recommend to the village board that the approval of the final plat to the Leeward addition to Bergamot final plat, phase 4E, be approved conditioned upon sidewalks appearing on all street sides, and the direction, and the addition of no direct access on lot one off of Brynhill Drive, and that motion carried 7-0. So I will make a motion here to get this on the table. So I would make a motion that we approve resolution number 1735, approving the final plat of Leeward addition to Bergamot.
Second.
Thank you. We have a representative here, would you like to, do you wanna speak to this at all, or you just wanna listen?
I can answer questions.
Okay, okay.
Do the board members know where this is located? Okay, or the maps, as our tech?
Yeah. Jeff, do you have any comments on this?
No, we've been working with them through this, and density-wise, this is a, this is a great move. Be some nice deep lots along there, they're gonna burn along Lincoln Road. Everything they've done really is, I think, an improvement over what was proposed there in the first place.
Okay.
Yeah, just might point out one thing, if you look on page two of the res, of the resolution, sorry, number four, before, and I know Bruce knows about this, before we can, we'll have the village officials sign the final plat, there needs to be a note on there indicating that there'll be no access from Lot 1 into Brynhill Drive. That was, that was a requirement that came out of Planning Commission, so.
Are there questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we have motion second to approve Resolution seventeen dash thirty-five approving the final plat of Leeward addition to Bergamot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
All right, so then, my, my second motion will be that we approve the agreement relating to the plat of Leeward addition to Bergamot.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
I second, yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Any questions, comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Third item, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement for the land division improvements, Bergamot Development, and this is for Phase 4, Leeward addition to Bergamot.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Now, haven't they started that already, some of the roads out through, through there?
We did a, a phase last year, or this past year, this past summer, not, not within this Leeward portion, but just up the road a little bit. And those are, those are being, I think, their, their improvements are, have been accepted or in the process.
There, yeah, we just have a final punch list on that, and it's, it's very nearing, close to acceptance.
That's just, just below the golf course, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, Leeward, Brynhill was extended, it used to have kind of like a little stub where a lot of the contractors were parking their equipment and storage.
Right.
That's been extended kind of down and around, excuse me, that detention pond area over there. And then, it just was kind of dead-ended, I think the original plan was to take it to Lincoln Road this year. But when this matter with the Leeward addition lots came up, fiduciary just said, well, we'll just run it down to kind of a temporary turnaround down there. And then, I believe your plan is this next spring, summer, the plan is done.
I'm not sure what the timing is, but I think, my sense is from, is that the next step will be improving Leeward and the, making the connection on to Lincoln.
Correct, yeah, that's what I understand, too, yeah.
Any further questions or comments? So, we have the motion, excuse me, motion second for the agreement for land division improvements of the Bergamot Development, Phase 4E, Leeward addition to Bergamot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. You're still up.
I still am, all right.
It's really nice to pass this off.
Yes, okay, so this is item, where'd I remember it in?
Four C.
Four C. And so, this is regarding ordinance number seventeen sixteen, approval of the general development plan and a specific implementation plan for eleven twenty Park Street. This is submitted by Dimension Four Madison Design Group Architect on behalf of the property owners, Fox Glen Partners, Patrick Coyle and Michael Coyle, for a proposed sixty-six unit sleep-in hotel. The hotel will be three stories, open seven days a week, twenty-four hours per day. Amenities include an indoor pool area. From the Planning Commission, being a move seconded by MAR to recommend to the village board the approval of the GDP for a hotel at eleven twenty Park Street, conditioned upon the following, meeting village planner Mike Slavvy's recommendations in his memo dated ten eighteen twenty seventeen, building material and color schemes to be authorized by village staff, and additional lighting. Recommend to the village board the approval of the SIP, conditioned upon the following, meeting village planner Mike Slavvy's recommendations in the same memo, the building material and color schemes to be authorized by village staff, and the additional lighting and the drive-through canopy. And that motion also carried seven zero. So, I'll make this first motion, I would move that the board by two-thirds vote may suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so then, I'll make this second motion, so we can get this on, for, up for discussion. I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance seventeen sixteen. This is an ordinance changing the zoning classification of the property located at eleven twenty Park Street.
Second, thank you.
So, we, Jeannie, we put a revised copy of the ordinance in front of you tonight?
Oh.
And the reason why was, the, the one that's in the packet talks about the signs, and this gets a little complicated. Our sign ordinance only allows two signs on the building, sleep-in needs three. The, the Planning Commission and the board, I feel pretty strongly are going to approve that change of the sign ordinance probably in December. But we can't, we can't make that change in the zoning ordinance, so we had to, we had to add something to Section D, 2D on page three, which deals with the signs. We're just basically acknowledging, the building's, you know, the building wants, wants to have three signs, but that has to be handled in a different process.
Okay.
Mike, could you go over the location again for anybody viewing this, because there's?
Yeah, I know, there's still confusion.
There is some confusion around that.
So, so the village bought the old motel, and this is where, this is where it gets confusing. And that's where the previous hotel developer was gonna build, that's, that, they're not building there. Their, this hotel is going next to the janitor's supply store across the street on Park Street. On vacant property. Corner of Rosewood and Park Street. Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you'd like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, Adam Oil for Fox Glen Partners.
Thanks, Jeff.
What I brought with me are just some samples that, you know, are quite close to the, the plans we've gone through. I do have to get them approved by sleep-in, but there's a couple of brick samples and a stone sample down on the floor beneath me. And then, on here, you can see the, the paint colors, and there's a, a facial sample right here, so that's a dark, darker color. As far as those lights go underneath the canopy, they'll simply be can lights, there'll be six can lights underneath the canopy.
Okay. Any questions for Adam?
So, so this is approved tonight, then Adam and I are working on the, his TIF proposal. So, that'll be coming in front of the board shortly.
Correct.
So, assuming the TIF proposal rolls through in a relatively speedy manner, what do you expect the completion of this project?
We were originally talking September 1st next year, I think that's maybe a little bit aggressive. October 1st is probably a fairly safe.
Okay, so next year?
I guess that, yeah, next October 1st, I think we could do.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? We have the motion second to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash sixteen for the property eleven twenty Park Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks for bringing all those samples to Adam, appreciate it.
Very good plan, yeah.
Okay, item D, discussion possible action regarding authorizing, authorize a hiring of account clerk three position at the hourly rate of twenty-three dollars. Now, there's a note, the police background should be completed next week on the candidate. The village board could authorize the Chair of Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee, and the Village Administrator to approve the hiring of the new account clerk three, or schedule special board meeting next week.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
So, and I put some language in front of you tonight, I don't know if you saw that motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, and we should note that Jeannie served on the interviewing panel for both the semi and finalist, so Jeannie knows the candidates and her candidate, yeah.
And can you just give us a little bit of background on this position?
On what the position does?
Well, no, is this an add to staff, is this a replacement of staff?
Replacement, yeah. And, and the reason why we're pushing this along is, we are short of staff upstairs, and we, we need to get this, we need to get, hopefully, the person goes through the police background, and we can hire the person next week, person gives their two-week notice, and we're trying to get them here, though, the Monday, Monday after Thanksgiving. So, that's our goal.
So, go ahead. So, you have the person really hired, but you're waiting for the background check?
They're, they're never hired until the police.
Until the background check is done.
Correct, yeah. But made it, we made an, a conditional offer. We're always holding things up, darling.
Are they always slow, you said?
No, no, I never say, never say about the police. Well, maybe in private, never in public.
After this person is hired, will the office then be fully staffed?
No, it will still be down to deputy clerk, and the way the twenty-eighteen budget's set up is that person hopes, we hope to have that person hired on May 1st next. May 1st, right? On May 1st next year, yeah. And then, we'll be fully staffed. But I think, but I think once this person's on, then we will go back to being open on, on Fridays, particularly during tax collection.
It's a bit messy. We'll be training too, so.
Yeah.
Hey, just for clarification on the motion, who made the motion? Okay, did you have this in front of you, Jeff?
I can certainly articulate that.
Yeah, why don't you do, if you're okay with that, why don't you go ahead and, and read that, and then we'll, that'll be it.
Well, you don't want to do anything today.
I move that the Chair of Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee, and Village Administrator be authorized to hire a new account clerk three at the hourly rate of twenty-three dollars per hour.
And the second was?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I don't know if somebody else did, but.
Okay. You'll hear that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, are there any further questions or comments on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mike. Item five, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight, amount two-hundred-seventy-one thousand, sixteen dollars and eighty cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a question. I'll just wait for the discussion to do it.
You're all set.
Okay. Number twenty-six sixteen. Lisa gets mad if I don't ask a question. She hauls all this stuff down here.
Oh, the cute.
Environmental consultants, acute and chronic wet test, is that a question for Jeff?
That's wastewater. Treatment plant on wastewater?
Thanks for the precise explanation.
Sounds like somebody I know.
I'd suggest invite Jerry next time you're doing it.
Yes, I can find out for you, that's a good question, but. Okay, as long as it's not like a, an old-time baptism.
No. No.
Thanks, man.
That's what the chronic comes into there.
Okay.
Other, other questions? Anyone? Okay, so we have a motion second to approve vouchers, amount two-hundred-seventy-one thousand, sixteen dollars and eighty cents, roll call, please.
Yes.
Bolling?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Bryanair?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Moonrow? Brett Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six is community input, anyone who'd wish to address the board tonight? Welcome, Judy.
It's getting to be the holiday season, well, I first should say, I'm Judy Knutson, I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber. We are having our tree lighting Saturday morning from seven to nine, it's open to the community, so we're asking for all the help, bring your ladders and help us out. Also, the VFW's having their ceremony at eleven o'clock on Saturday, which is the eleventh. They are having lunch afterward, and they asked me to announce that J.L. Richards is donating lunch, but they would still like you to call if you're coming to make reservations, so they know how many to serve for.
Where's that gonna be at, Judy?
At the senior center. So, if you can call, that'd be great. And the other one, the horse parade is back at one PM on Saturday. So, hopefully, the weather holds out for us, and we can get the horse parade into, and you know what, the Wisconsin game's now till two-thirty, so, there's no excuse, right? So, please join us, we're really looking forward to it. Also, November 25th is Small Business Saturday, a lot of our retailers have a lot of sales going on, so please patronize our small business owners, if you would. And the, and the restaurants are all waiting for you, too, so, thank you.
Which Saturday is the horse parade?
This Saturday.
And we, do we talk about the lighting?
Yep.
Yeah. I step up for five minutes. A whole meeting happens.
So, we're hanging lights in the morning.
We're hanging lights from seven to nine on Saturday, eleven o'clock is the ceremony for the VFW, and then lunch, and then at one PM is the horse parade. So, join us in Oregon.
My husband's out of town, so I've been instructed that I get to bring his ladder and help hang the lights.
He just emailed.
Of course he did. So, see you Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Yeah.
That's Burgie's jury start.
Are you bringing coffee, darling?
I think you'll probably have to go to the chocolate keeper.
Oh, okay, we could make that happen.
Or to the restaurants.
Chocolate has caffeine in it, doesn't it?
Sure.
Or the, or the Firefly, whatever.
Okay, item seven, proclamations and announcements, item A, board comments, anyone?
I would mention that the new food pantry building had a soft opening that went really well last week, and the ribbon cutting will be the thirteenth. And I believe you're gonna, you're gonna notice that?
Yes, yes.
As a board meeting, before o'clock at the thirteenth.
Yeah.
So, it's a very beautiful facility, we're lucky to have it.
Four. They, they did it at four, because they were worried that we had a meeting at five.
Daylight savings.
I just saw something that said five o'clock.
Maybe your invitation was five o'clock.
Everything I've seen has been four, it's on my calendar for four.
Yeah, me, too, that's what I have.
Maybe someone's putting out misinformation.
There's a, I've been, there's like two Facebook invites that I've seen for it, because, and I don't know why, I don't know who organized both of them, but.
That's a part of it. But Randy, Randy told me it was at four, because you, you guys were concerned about bumping into a meeting at five, so.
That's what it said in the paper, from four to six, and, and everybody should bring toilet paper, diapers, food, anything, just to get it all started.
Any other board comments?
Yes, as a former scout leader, I'd like to mention that this coming Saturday is a Boy Scout salmon dinner from four to eight, and it's held at Roeben Corners Intermediate School.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Item B, staff comments, Jeff?
Well, a couple of things. The, well, we did complete the, kind of the paving patch, and we had a contractor come out and take a look at the directional drill area that was kind of starting to sink, and, and it turned out it probably wasn't from that, it might have just been some previously unstable soils. And so, that's been patched, I believe, and, and is holding nicely, so we hope that's gonna continue to be that way throughout the winter and on. We are the proud owners of Jefferson Street from downtown at Main Street out to the west boundary of Ash Street right away. So, I, we're, we're just beaming, we're proud parents of this new stretch of about a half-mile roadway. But, you know, turned out nicely, and according to the jurisdictional transfer, it was ours on November 1st, so we'll be maintaining that. I did, we'll talk a little bit later, but did meet with the crews and kind of worked out how we're gonna handle the plowing and salting of that stretch now that we're responsible for it. Yeah, I think that was it.
Item three.
Oh, North Alpine, yes, North Alpine, thank you. That is scheduled to be paved, I believe, within the next, well, it should be paved before Thanksgiving. And I expressed to the contractor personally that, that was no, under no circumstances was it allowed to be going throughout the winter, and he agreed completely. Actually, I think they, they're up there doing some final grading, I believe they're placing curb tomorrow on Cassandra Way. And once the curb gets placed, then they'll have the asphalt out, finish that. I noticed that the, the nose, the concrete noses on the islands had been poured out on Alpine Way. So, the, really, the only thing left to do now is the asphalt paving.
Okay. And there's a note that brush pickup has ended and leaf collection is ongoing?
Correct.
Still completed?
Correct, we will try to go through, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, we do end the brush pickup in October, but unfortunately, when people are out doing leaves and that kind of stuff, they tend to also bring brush forward. The only thing we'd ask is that they keep the brush separate, we will try to go through the village one more time with the, the brush chipping equipment. And if we don't get it this fall, we'll get it in the spring, or they can always take it down to the brush pile on South Prairie Parkway.
Okay. And item four is just a special event that was noted, November 13th, the four P M, the food pantry ribbon cutting and so on. Item five, upcoming meetings, Mr. Grace?
So, thank you, Steve. At the next board meeting on the twentieth, the board will consider adopting the twenty-eighteen budget, and then, we will also review the revised capital improvement plan. And at that meeting, we're going to try to identify the amount the village board is comfortable in borrowing for the new library. We had our first ad hoc committee meeting, and it was determined, we, we need to get that number identified. Everything else, I think, will fall into place, but we have to get that number identified. And so, Jim Mann will be there, and the library, some library board member, I think, will also be at the meeting, so we'll make some progress on that.
Okay.
And then, we'll meet on December 4th, and then, a special meeting on the eleventh to review a lift station analysis through the east side of Highway fourteen. And then, on the eighteenth of December, we'll bring that food pantry request back for consideration by the board.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Item eight, communication miscellaneous business, item A, follow-up to the October 20th South Main Street Public Forum will occur at the November 20th board meeting. Item B, discussion of possible action, sharing in the cost of the library's fundraising feasibility study. Recommendation from the library building memorandum of understanding, ad hoc committee include five thousand dollars in the two thousand and eighteen village's general fund budget to share in the cost of the library's fundraising feasibility study.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Nick, you want to tell us the expectations for the feasibility study, please?
Certainly, the hope is that we will be able to, the library board and the village board would both contribute towards a fundraising feasibility study that would allow us to determine a, an appropriate amount to aim at with. Certainly, the hope is that we will be able to, the library board and the village board would both contribute towards a fundraising feasibility study that would allow us to determine a, an appropriate amount to aim at with the fundraising efforts for the library, so that we can plan accordingly.
Good, thank you.
Wouldn't we have to identify the cost first before we can determine fundraising?
Well, if, so on the twentieth, we're gonna, we're gonna identify the borrowing. The feasibility study is gonna happen after that, Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah, but it will be part of the discussion.
All right. What's the total cost of the study?
Well, we haven't put out an RFP for a study yet, but we have been able to look at what it's run similar municipalities within the last couple of years, and it, there are a range of options, is what we've seen, ranging from the lower end, I believe it was ten to thirty thousand dollars. Does that sound right, Mike?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And when you say fundraising feasibility study, it's gonna determine the amount of the fundraising, is that?
Correct. We want to have a reasonable goal. We want to set ourselves up for success and to plan for success, so we want to have a target that is in line with what the community might be able to support.
Okay, thanks.
Isn't it also, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I just wanted to add from my own personal experience, not that long ago, I went through a capital campaign, and we started that with a feasibility study. And what it did was it tested the market to give us a reasonable idea of what we could expect to raise. And where that was beneficial to us is it kept us from going into a project with an unreasonably low or an unreasonably high expectation, and then all the planning that goes along with it. So that was my personal experience, and it was, it was well worth the investment, especially when you're dealing with a multimillion dollar capital campaign.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think it's probably appropriate, I was around on the board when this library was built, and I remember when toward the end of the process, the library board got informed by the village board, hey, this is, this is all yours now. You have to raise money to furnish everything. And so that was a big shock, so at least there'll be some advance notice of whatever is expected now, so hopefully, there won't be any surprises on either side.
Yeah, I think there's much more thorough planning going into this process than there was the first time. And Nicky, isn't it true that the library board will contribute $5,000 also, so it's kind of a joint effort?
That, that's the idea. So that's what we discussed at the meeting. It hasn't gone before the library board yet, but the representatives that were there were very much in support of the idea.
Yeah, that's kind of, you know, we talked about we need to collaborate, and this is an indication that that can happen, by each contributing half of this, this amount. Any other questions, comments? So we have the motion and second to, that came from the library building memorandum of understanding ad hoc committee to include $5,000 in our 2018 general fund budget to share in the cost of the library's fundraising feasibility study. All in favor? General fund budget to share in the cost of the library's fundraising feasibility study. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nicky.
Item C, continuing reviewing the 2018 budget items and possible board action. Review of the four tax levy options.
I'll take a moment and go through these.
Yeah.
I put hard copies in, in front of you. That way, I think it's easier to look at than trying to find them on the screen, so they're in the plastic folder.
Yeah.
So Lisa, you correct me if I, okay. So the first one, the option one basically is the option the board approved for preliminary budget, and the only thing that we changed was we had a small adjustment for health insurance, which, which actually reduced it, thanks, Adam, reduced it a couple of dollars as far as the tax increase. So that's, that's option one. Option two is in keeping with, with the, this recent motion here, we added the $5,000 into, into the levy for the feasibility study, so that's, that's the only change for option two, was adding the feasibility study in. Option three includes the feasibility study and the insurance adjustment, but moving the police officer position to March first. I talked to the chief, and if the board, you know, basically said tonight or even next month, yep, go hire the new position next year, it's a good, it's four months to do the recruitment, so we thought March first would be about as soon as we could get somebody here on staff. And then option four has changed since we put option four in the packet, starting last, yeah, last year, the Department of Revenue is handling the, the review of our expenditure, not ours, just everyone in the state, expenditure restraint of submittal. And so Lisa and I looked at it again today, and I think we still want to look at it a little bit further, but we really believe that at this point, we could leave the police officer, the new police officer position, starting as of July first, rather than moving him out, personnel to October, and putting the $5,000 back in for, that we took out for the, from the market salary study. And we, so we could do that, and, oh, thank you, yeah, I got it. Oh, that's fine. And then, but continue to, but have to reduce the contingency by 10,000, and miscellaneous accounts by 1743, and then possibly $1,000 out of legal. So, so basically, the officer position would be back starting in July, and the $5,000 would be back in for the salary study. And, and this would allow the village to qualify for the expenditure restraint, which, which will be between 30 and 35,000 dollar payment from the state for the, for the nineteen budget, 2019 budget.
Is, is option four the only one that does that?
Option four is the only one that does it, yes, correct.
And that's also the lowest amount of levy, right?
Yeah, right, right now, so, and right now, when it was, the information's in your packet, Jerry, that was at $68. By redoing the expenditure restraint formula, that increased to $77 on the average house. You don't, you don't have that one in front of you, because we're, we still want to proof it a little bit. We found a, but we, we were trying to find a way to move the police officer position back to July, and I think we found a way of doing that.
So we see that next week, then?
Oh, well, yeah, well, you'll, you'll see it at the hearing. We wanna, we're gonna run this again, but.
That's two weeks.
Yeah, from the twentieth, yeah, yeah. It'll be, if the board approves it, we'll put it into the resolution, the budget resolution.
And at that time, we'll have the tax amounts from the other entities?
Well.
Or at least the estimates?
We, we, we have them, every one except Dane County. And so we, it's harder, and we asked for running a sample tax bill. We can't do that till we get Dane County.
You know, when you, when you're talking about setting the village levy, it'd be nice to know what everybody else was, to know what the whole increase.
You have everybody except for the county.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, so. Are you comfortable telling them the numbers out of that tax bill you had, or is it, you still? Okay, so, yeah, M A T C would go up about a little less than $10 for, on the average house. And then the school district would go up a little less than 150. And then we don't have, there, there is no state tax anymore. That, that was eliminated.
Right.
Which was, actually, that was very small anyways, and then.
Forty dollars.
Yeah, forty dollars, yeah, forty dollars. And then, so we don't have the county, and then we have ours.
What was the county last year? I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I, I'm sorry, Jerry, I don't remember that either, yeah.
So.
But the thing I want to, I want to emphasize, this is, this is the grossed amount, so this is before the lottery, lottery credit first dollar.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so this is not the net. Yeah.
Okay.
And again, oh, I mean, again, the increases are because of the, you know, people's houses are going up in value, and.
Yep.
So even though the rate's going down, your value's going up, and, and your, the levy's going up as well, yeah.
And thanks also for this list of changes, as we last discussed this.
And I apologize for not having the sheet to hand out today. I just wanted to, Lisa and I started working out today, and we just, we caught something. We forgot, like I said, the state changed the way they, they do now. I think they've always had the formula, but it's how they interpret it. That's what I was trying to think of. Their, their interpretation of this, of how they handle the review is different than in the past, so.
Lisa, do you remember how much the lottery credit was last year?
I want to say around 135, 140.
I was gonna say something between 100, 150.
Somewhere around in there, yeah.
Okay.
But I, you know, I shouldn't discount that, that state. You know, forty dollars is forty dollars on a tax bill, so.
Oh, yeah, and that's why it's, in, you know, my mind, it's very important to qualify for this restraint program, not walk away from that 30 to 35,000 dollars.
So I mean, right, so, you know, we've been saying this a few times, that if everything happens the way it's gonna hopefully happen, the recession doesn't happen, the budget in 2020 will be, will be better than in 2019, because we did not have the growth, you know, we're probably not gonna see RSS value go up, you know, eight percent like we're seeing for 18. So to lose $30,000 right off the bat for 19 would be, be hard. You know, we could, in theory, with not having that, and not having the increase in the net new construction, and having to then also cover half of the police officer position, you got, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars in the hole, just starting off in 2019, so that's why we think it's important to qualify for expenditure restraint. And again, that number is gonna fluctuate, because the state allocates so much money, and if 500 communities apply and get the money, that's the amount you get. If 1,000 applied, it's the same amount of money, so that's why sometimes, I think the one year we received forty, forty. Forty, and now we're, I think it's going down to 34.
Thirty-four, 34.
And that's because there's more communities applying for it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so looking at the one where we qualify for the expenditure restraint, that's having the contingency fund that we've currently budgeted for, is that correct?
We, we budgeted, we budgeted $20,000.
Right.
So we, we reduced that to 10, 10,000.
And then reducing the market salaries, $5,000, what positions would that make?
So, so that, so that we put back in. But the one we looked at, the one we looked at today, that's back in. But, but that, what that is, that we have $30,000 in the budget to do salary study, and then take that $30,000 and come back to the board to do market adjustments for positions next year.
Okay.
Probably, probably mid-year we'll, we'll do that.
Do we need to do a salary study? I, I just, I'm thinking, like, aren't, because they're government officials, aren't the wages public record that we can look it up ourselves?
We do a survey. Candy will prepare a, a survey that we send out to other, our comparable communities.
Okay.
And then they respond, and then we, we work, we will look at the numbers that we've done in the past.
Okay, so it's not like hiring a company?
I, I've wanted to do that in the past, but there has been a lot of enthusiasm to do that. I still think at some point, we're gonna have to do that, but we're gonna get through the next couple of years and keep doing it, because it'd probably cost about $20,000 to hire a consultant, something like that.
Yeah, that was kind of the plans a couple of years ago. We decided to use that money instead.
To give to employees.
To give to employees.
Yep.
Other questions or thoughts on any of these options?
Chief, how do you feel about the July first start date for your new officer?
Well, like I told Mike, I'm just appreciative to get another officer. Obviously, the sooner the better. That we can get officers would be great, but I'm happy to get them whenever I can. I mean, if we start them in July.
Or her.
Or, I'm sorry, start them.
But it's only gonna be one.
It's only gonna be one, yeah. If we start him or her in July, which, I won't get into that, we'd like to have more females. That means with everything said and done, if we get someone that doesn't have the academy, they would probably start July, August, sometime in October. If they have the academy, then it's a nine-month process, so it would take a while before we get them.
What's the, what's the percentage of people that come in with academy and, and don't?
It's changing. You know, it used to be where there were so many people applying for the job, the only thing that got you a little bit above everyone else was you had the academy. Now, there's not as many people applying, so agencies are more willing to spend that money to get a good applicant, and so it's, it's, it's kind of a cyclical event. You know, I was fortunate when I got hired back in 94, that I was put through the academy, but that was with Dane County, and that's, they do that with most of them anyway, but it's really tough for small agencies now. You know, we just put one through the academy, and it was, it's, it's a nine-month process, time they get out, so it takes a long time.
Well, I like the idea.
That answered your question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, July first is better than the end of the year, not as good as the beginning of the year, and you're just happy to have an officer.
Correct.
Got it.
That was a good summary.
You're paying attention. Appreciate it.
I took notes.
I have to say that I like the idea of starting an officer earlier, or as early as possible, I guess I should say, considering I asked Mike on those numbers, because I got to thinking as we were discussing the police department's budget and talking about, you know, the, what it was, 56% of the time, we have one officer on duty, that we as a community are paying for not having an officer on duty. We're paying, you know, like, we're paying when our vehicles get broken into, we're paying Dane County to bring a sheriff in, so we're paying for it in one way or another. This way, we can just bring them into our family and hopefully have them working more here, rather than just when we need them.
Well, when, when the sheriff responds, you know, as a taxpayer, you're paying for that through your county tax bill.
Right.
We're not, was that considered mutual aid?
Mutual aid, yeah.
So you're not, you're not paying extra for that.
No, no.
But there's a response time.
But like, I think of, you know, like, I am paying extra insurance because my car windows got broken into, and I had to put a new lock in my garage when that got broken into, and so, like, that's just me, and I know we've had, like, on that particular issue, lots of people affected by it, and then there's plenty of other issues if we, as we know from the reports that we get, so we are paying for it in one way. I think this would be a better way to pay for it.
Well, I think it's important to stay on top of this as a board, because the community's not getting any smaller, so our workload is simply, you know, increasing exponentially, so, you know, to be fiscally responsible and get it in the budget as soon as we can is only gonna benefit everyone involved.
Yeah, like, like Jenna said, prevention is much better than responding afterwards. It doesn't cost as much.
Thank you for that succinct summary.
We're working on summaries tonight.
What's the impact of a hotel on the police force, now that you've got a 24/7 business establishment with transient clientele?
It'll absolutely bring more work for us, for sure. You know, I can think back to my days in Whitewater, and, you know, that we had a hotel, we had a couple hotels in Whitewater, but we were there quite a bit, so drug activity, prostitution, that type of stuff comes in with that type of establishment, so it'll increase our work, and, and, you know, you're adding subdivisions, right and left, it seems like, so that's all gonna increase our work.
And don't you think today, too, you don't get as many young men or young ladies to apply for the police job?
Yeah, it's tougher. It definitely is, and you notice I'm wearing a morning band, and that's one of the officers in Rockford just got killed over the weekend on a traffic stop, so our job is definitely not getting any safer out there, so.
Further question or comments on any of these options? So we need a motion or an option to get us started?
I'd like a motion to approve option four, and I chose that in order to qualify for the expenditure restraint program, and, and I'd like, you know, I, however the staff wants to mix and match their, their changes.
Yeah, thank you.
That's up to them, because if they can get it lower between now and the twentieth, they would be great.
I'll, I'll, I'll wait first.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so that's a great point, Jerry.
Did you get that whole motion?
That's a long one.
You started discussion.
Who wants to do the summary for that one?
So what typically we do is when we qualify for expenditure restraint, we, we get it right underneath the, like, so it can go up, go up 4% this year for 18, excuse me, so we're gonna get it like at 3.99, 0.7. And, and we're not gonna drop any, if it's okay with the board, we're not gonna drop any more than that, because it's, you know, you, if you drop the levy so much, you know, at some point, we, it goes back to what Jim Mann has been saying, he's gonna talk about this probably at the twentieth, we are gonna borrow money for the library, for streets, and we don't want the levy to go too low, or else we have a spike for any year, so.
That was a little bit tongue-in-cheek on my part.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm being.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, there's a reason why we're.
I understand.
There's a reason why we're doing it this way, yeah.
Any discussion? So we have the motion and second to adopt option four. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Mike and Lisa. Item two, discussion possible action on proposed adjustments to the 2018 budget from adoption of preliminary budget. Recommended motion is that we accept the budget adjustments for the 2018 budget to be presented at the November 20th public hearing.
And, see, that was, that was what you just did.
Okay, so that took care of that.
They're fine, yeah, thanks.
That went fast.
Mm-hmm, you're very good.
Okay, item D, discussion possible action on revised October 30, 2017 snow and ice control program, mobility and safety, and notice to village residents regarding basket. control program, mobility and safety, and notice to village residents regarding basketball standards. And village right-of-way recommend motion to approve the revised October 30, 2017 snow and ice control program, which is titled Mobility and Safety.
This is something we just update it every year, or, sorry.
It's your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Now you can speak.
Now I can speak, thank you, sorry about that. This is something that we just update annually, this is our, our plan for snow removal and ice, ice control within the village. I have met with, my staff this last week, and we went over this in its draft form and everything. Really, mostly the changes are very, very minor from year to year. This year, we added, obviously, the need to be able to be plowing Jefferson Street, and I've added, with the reassignment of one of our staff members, I added them into the, the plowing plan for kind of sidewalks and paths and everything like that. But that's pretty much the changes we see this year. Really, you know, I, I will say, and I, I'm, I am biased with this, but I think our guys do a fantastic job, and it's, it is an arduous task when we do get a lot of snow and ice, and it's, it's kind of one of those tasks that you're not gonna make everyone happy all the time, but I think they do a great job, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, we'll just have a normal winter.
So do you have any changes on this, Jeff?
Just the ones I just mentioned.
Okay.
I hear a lot of comments and wonder that, in support of the good job that our workers do, so.
Yep.
Questions, comments? Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve the revised October 30, 2017 snow and ice control program, which is titled Mobility and Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And just the other, one other quick thing really on the very end, is, is just a note on the, this thing was tagged on the very end, which is about the basketball hoops, and what I'd be asked is, I've provided kind of a little tag here on colored paper for our staff to, as they're going around doing the leaf pickup, to if they see something that's sticking out into the right-of-way, the, go ahead and just tag that. Just a reminder, because that kind of stuff hangs over, and if it damages vehicles, if it damages plows, that could be something that can go back to them, and they're really not allowed to have you out there anyway.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Item E, letters from State Senators Ringhand and Erpenbach in response to village's contact regarding the dark store issue.
Just FYI.
Yeah, okay. Item F, what they're doing is trying to protect municipalities.
Correct, yes.
Item F, discussion, possible action. This was previously approved at October 23rd board meeting for a 15-year loan. Finance advisor Jim Mann recommends taking out a 20-year loan to reduce the annual debt service payments. So Resolution Number 17-34, state trust fund loan for financing the purchase and redevelopment of motel property at 1053 Park Street in Tiff 4, in amount of $600,000, with an interest rate of 4% for 20 years. So the motion is to approve Resolution 17-34.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? It's pretty much as it is, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, discuss, discussion, possible action on the previously approved $66,000 agreement amount at October 23rd board meeting, a revised accurate appraisal full value maintenance agreement for assessment services in 2018 to 2019 with reduced office hours by the assessor. The village paid $31,500 in 2017 for assessor services. So that's basically the motion with office hours in December, April, and May, but not in January, February, and March.
So I'll, I'll make the motion for discussion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, am I reading this right, that the cost for the service is doubled?
It's, it's gone from $31,500 to $33,000 annually.
Can you tell me what the $66,000 is referencing?
It's a two-year contract.
That's two years, yeah.
I got it, thank you.
And, and Jeannie, this goes back to your question, when you had the last meeting, I was confused, too. So they, they were gonna charge us more for keeping the regular, all, all the months of, of office hours, they felt they had not been charging us the right amount. And so that, even though that was in the, the agreement that they were gonna, the $66,000 is gonna give us all this, those months again, there was a miscommunication between us and Accurate. So Peggy went back and talked to the assessor a few times, and they decided, because we've been such long-term customers, that they were gonna give us those three months each